Am I? Courtney, am I calling? Right.
Probably not.
I wouldn't think so.
Okay, it is six oh five P M. Like, call meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Monir, Childress, Angara.
Here.
Here.
Lisa. Here.
Briggs, Nelson.
Here. For Miss President. The first item on our agenda is audience comments, and Miss Proff has signed up.
I think there are two names in front of me. Are they just listening?
I only got one name here.
Okay, it's one name. Excuse me. Good evening, and thank you very much. I'm going to ask some questions. There's a memorandum for understanding the orchestra stipends. Are you opening up Pandora's Box by giving them stipends? Are there going to be stipends for special education, people doing I E Ps? I mean, if I tried to find any school districts that give stipends for orchestra, and I couldn't find any. I'd just like to know what are the stipend amounts that you're considering? I just don't want you to open up Pandora's Box. I don't know if this is on. Open up Pandora's Box and one, one's going to get, orchestra's going to get stipends, and then you're going to wonder about, as I said, the other departments. So do we know what the stipends are, the amount? Okay. I just would like answers. If not, I'll just do a Freedom of Information. When you do, when you do the financial audit report, are they going to give the rating that the company, when they did the audit, are they going to list the rating today, or will it be available for taxpayers? And the School Improvement Plan eight D. When you redo the School Improvement Plan, are you going to address the truancy issues? The behavioral issues, the chronic absenteeism, and I'd like to know if the numbers are improving or if the numbers are improving, are they staying the same? And also the nurse stipends. The nurse stipends are going to the idea of fee for service. Are they being claimed by I E P? Five oh four I E P or nurses services. They could be done quarterly, semi-annually, semi-annually and yearly. That way, the administrator and the finance person and the director of special ed could recoup the money that they're using for the nurse stipends. Because when you have, there was a case in your minutes about a child needing more services. Make sure that when you get the services, you follow the guidelines and get state reimbursable because according to what the minutes were, there are some needs, and we should keep, the district should keep track of the needs and claim the needs with the administrator, the director of special ed, and the finance person. Because they are probably allowed under five oh four or I E P. As well as transportation. And then are you actively involved with your parent fee for services with the special education? Because you're going to, it said that there was two feeding and one-on-one support and nursing and independent. So make sure that when you provide the services, you're also following the guidelines for reimbursement from the state of Illinois. And that's needed. Sometimes they will either go under Medicare or the parents' insurance. And the district would work with them to keep a track of what's going on. There's the Illinois Medicare School Based Health Services, and they will provide assistance to any administrator or director of special ed that needs assistance to do fee for service. That way, the district can claim what is entitled according to the I E P and the five oh four. And the service is provided free of charge, and it's for reimbursement according to state guidelines. And there's a big write-up on a school code on providing eligibility applied for school-based services which are reimbursable. And also, parents do, some parents do claim it on their insurance, and if you, if you seek the approval of the parent, it's just a one-time approval that you will have to sign for to get reimbursement. And I thank you for that.
Thank you. I'll follow up with you no later than Wednesday with answers to your question.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, sir.
I'll follow up with you no later than Wednesday with answers to your question.
Sir, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any questions from the board on the personnel issue? Do we need executive session to discuss?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is committee reports.
Correct.
Okay. So superintendent's report.
Well, good evening, Board of Education, audience members in person and certainly those at home online. Thanks for joining us tonight. Really appreciate you coming out. Sure everyone's trying to get home to see the creative way that the Bears can lose tonight, so I will keep my comments focused. At last week's meeting, we did wish our eighth grade Lady Falcons basketball team luck as they moved on to the playoffs. Unfortunately, though, their season ended last Wednesday with a loss. We're so proud of the girls, their coaches, their parents, teammates. While they didn't bring home the trophy, they have a lot to be proud of, and we're really excited for them and what their future holds. We have a number of really great activities going on this week, including the beginning band and sixth grade band concert tomorrow night at six thirty P M at Parker. We have on Wednesday the sixth to eighth grade choir concert, which will also be at Parker Junior High. That's at six thirty as well. And then on Thursday, we do have two events. At six o'clock, we have the Serena Hills Choir at Serena Hills performing, and then the Parkers Orchestra at seven o'clock at Parker. So a lot of events going on this week as we wrap up before winter break. But after all the activities, as soon as we'll finish the week with parties, certainly a lot of fun activities as we are heading towards kicking off the winter break on Friday, December twentieth. That day will also signify the end of the second quarter, so it'll be the conclusion of at least fifty percent of our school year, which is really hard to imagine because it seems like we were just sitting here in August getting ready and excited to welcome the kids back and get started with the back-to-school movie night. So half the school year is over, but we have a lot of work to do. This is our last meeting before the holidays, so I do hope that all of you get to enjoy some time over the break, certainly with family and friends. And I will see most of you that I don't see this week when we return to in-person learning on Monday, January sixth, twenty twenty-five. That's the end of my report.
Next, we have our consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, including personnel report twenty-five zero one two, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar, the orchestra stipends memorandum of understanding, and the supplemental school staffing primary service agreement with independence plus.
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Ralph.
Yes.
Angara.
Yes.
Lisa.
Yes.
Yes, and the motion passes. Next up, we have action items, classroom furniture. We have a motion to approve the purchase of furniture for the Norman de Villas, Rena Hills, and Heather Hill refreshes as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Ralph.
Yes.
Angara.
Yes.
Lisa.
Yes.
Yes, the motion passes. Next, may I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six staffing plan as presented?
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Angara.
Yes.
Lisa.
Yes.
Ralph.
Yes.
Yes, and the motion passes. And next, our first discussion item is a twenty twenty-four financial audit report.
Good evening.
Hello.
R S M has performed the twenty twenty-four audit, and really, it's kind of Jeff's show, so I'm going to present Jeff Slate of R S M.
Welcome, Jeff.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Thank you for having me tonight. As Fran had mentioned, we've been performing the district's audit for a few years now, and today provide brief highlights and some required communications to the board. So the audit that takes place, it's over about three, for about a three to five months time span because we have what is called the planning phase. A lot of that is mostly administrative-related tasks, performing inquiries, performing some initial walkthroughs of processes. I know there's a little bit more legwork between us and the district this year due to a new auditing standard being implemented. And that just requires us to perform walkthrough procedures over the design and implementation of internal controls at the district itself. Then the, then we move on to the fieldwork phase, which is where we perform more of our detail audit testing procedures, such as reviewing invoices, confirming cash and outstanding, cash balances and outstanding debt, performing analytical procedures, and making sure that the, gaining assurance that the balances reported on the financial statements you have in front of you are in fact accurate and not materially misstated. Then we move into the report phase, which, the report and then report issuance phase, which is where we're at tonight. This is where we're drafting the financials, drafting single audit reports, the district's A F R that gets submitted to ISB, and then anything else other, such as required communications, such as management letters, drafting single audit reports. And that's why, you know, it's a drawn-out process, a lot, some of it, a lot of it nowadays with the hybrid environment takes place more in the background. We're not onsite as much as we need to be because, well, governments have limited resource and spacing, and now everyone has the capability to hop online, hop on video calls. So we do whatever is most accommodating for the district in itself. We're able to work, we're happy to be onsite all the time, or we'll come out a few days, whatever is best for the district. So that goes over the high-level process overview of what takes place with the audit. When it comes to the required communications, first and foremost, with the district's financial statements for the year, we're issuing an unmodified opinion. That's, in other words, is a clean opinion. It's the best and high, best opinion that we can provide, and it's the one that the district should want to, want to attain each and every year. There are two sets, within the district's financial report, there are two sets of financials. It's, one is called the government-wide financial statements, and the other piece is the fund financial statements. And this just really kind of separates, segregates how the district operates versus their overall picture. The fund financial statements are more short-term in nature. They look year-to-year, budget-to-actual, and how it's performing operationally. Because that's what your citizens and the users of the financial statements are most concerned about. Then you get into the government-wide, and now, since the district operates on what's called the modified cash basis of accounting, there's not too many differences. You don't see the, say, T R S net pension liability come onto the balance sheet or lease assets and things of that nature. But the two modifications from your typical cash basis of accounting is the recording of capital assets and long-term debt. And with that, that's where you get the two, that's where there's a little bit of a difference between the two reports. They're almost the same, but on the statement activities, you'll see, we record, the district records depreciation expense, and then also removes the principal payments on its bonds and records those as a reduction of the liability. So in the year, overall, it was very positive because in this year, the district's general fund expenditures exceeded its, or sorry, general fund revenues exceeded its expenditures by two point nine million. The general fund obviously being the district's main operational account versus, say, your capital projects, debt service or I M R F, which are more specific and have restricted revenue sources. Then during the year, as you know, the district issued the, the, a series of bonds which are going to be used for capital projects in the near term. Because with the modified cash basis is that we close out at June thirtieth. We don't, there's not really much testing that looks beyond that six thirty period because it's either cash was paid between July first and June thirtieth, or it wasn't. And then same goes for cash receipts. So with the district's two point nine million dollars, before you get into the other financing sources, that brings you to a net income for the year of three point one million dollars roughly. But some of that increase is just simply due to the premium on bond sale, proceeds from issuance, how much gets transferred out. So I look at these mostly from how, when I look at it from operational standpoint, I'm looking for revenues minus expenses because those are the costs that you can control. Those other financing sources are really just one-time events and not something that the district can count on year-to-year or plan for. But that brings the district's general fund, fund balance to a total of about thirty-four million dollars, just a little over. And that's very positive. As the G F O A, they recommend having at least two months of fund balance, or two months of expenditures in fund balance. So this has been building up over the years. Some of that has been really helped with some of the COVID grant money, but as you know, that that money is beginning to dry up with time. But with the bond issuance, now you have a healthy surplus of cash to be used for any future, for the upcoming projects. Then when we get into, say, some of then, there's required estimates, when it gets more into the required communications, there are accounting estimates. The only ones that we have are depreciation expense for the year. We had no disagreements with management. There is no outside consultation with other accountants that we're aware of, no disagreements. And overall, we had a positive, I thought it was a positive audit experience this year. I really appreciate Fran and her team for all the help that they provide. They're very responsive. They're always willing to hop on a call for questions and issues, more than willing to provide documentation as it gets requested. Before getting into the single audit, one other piece that you have in front of you is there was a management letter that we had to issue this year. It also was, same thing goes, it's in the single, basically the same deficiency and compliance finding, the one, it's one issue. But due to firm policy as a result of government auditing standards, we're now kind of required to split certain things out. But it all centers around the untimely filing of the data collection form for last year. So this was an issue that actually pertained to fiscal year twenty twenty-three, and it really was just the federal audit clearinghouse rolled out a new, a new portal for uploading the district's data collection form. And with that, there was minimal guidance on what change. They stopped sending out emails, letting clients and auditors that data collection forms have been prepared. And they also added a new step where the auditee was required to, after they've certified the data collection form, they were then required to select another link and click submit to, to formally submit to the federal audit clearinghouse. That was something no one was really aware of, and it only came up as one of the clients had to pull it. One of our clients had to pull it down from the clearinghouse website and realized it wasn't submitted. So then began communicating to everyone, each and all of our clients, that a lot of these data collection forms were sitting in limbo.
You said that this was put in place by the federal government?
The federal, yeah, that would be part of the federal government. I believe it's part of the system of awards management. It's the federal audit clearinghouse. It's more or less a data warehouse where we take the single audit, we input it in a specific format, because then I think they're able to disseminate it to all of their agencies and departments in a very clean manner, and that way, they say the Department of Education doesn't need to review each and every single audit report. I think by inputting it in that format, then they're able to see, okay, this district compliant, this one not. This one's expenditures match what we have. I think it just simplifies the process on their end.
So I guess I'm confused because you said ensures a timely, I mean, I'm not understanding, ensures a timely filing of the single audit report package. So they put this new requirement in place but didn't tell people they had to do this? Is that what I'm understanding?
More or less. I mean, the communication was very limited. I think the only thing that was in there, it was just one of the, in the instructions buried in a thirty, forty-page document. I think this is, from what I've heard, this is going to be a very common finding because, like I said, Fran did everything right as if in years past. We did it as well.
Right.
And like I said, these were just sitting on, you know, we didn't even know, and like I said, the federal audit clearinghouse, they used to send every step of the process. It used to be, hey, a data collection form's been started for your district. Okay, now it's been pre-cleared. Now it's ready to be certified. Now it's been finalized, but now you get nothing.
So the bottom line is, you said you had several clients had the same problem?
Yes, I think this is, I think across the board, this can be very common finding, especially for school districts where I believe the portal rolled out ten, October fifth of the year.
And so this paragraph will be in the reports of lots and lots of entities you represent?
Okay.
And to be clear on the issue, right, it's not that our administration didn't sit down at the portal on the right day to submit it. It's just bad user interface design. There was something else to click before it was formally submitted.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, so we're able to go back and we were able to see that we submitted on, we certified on time, Fran certified on time. It's just there was an additional link that we weren't aware of, and that just, so it just sat out there. And then when you look at it, say, we're going over twenty twenty-four's audit, the data collection form's already been formally submitted and accepted. So this will, this will be a one-time finding. And from an overall perspective, it doesn't impact, the impact is very minimal. This is more like a slap on the wrist type of thing. There's no impact on our testing. There's no impact on the district's auditee risk rating, no impact on funding. So really, no.
Is there any impact of?
Yeah, you said minimal, so I wonder what minimal is.
Not slap on the wrist. There is no impact.
There's, I mean, yeah. To be frank, yes, no impact at all. There's, I mean, yeah, to be frank, yes, no impact at all. It's something, because of the government auditing standards, we're simply required to report it. I, I don't really like reporting this one, but.
That's part of, why we have you, so that's fine.
Yeah, dude, it's just a recent change. We used to have more judgment, but now it's a required finding. So that's just what's communicated in the management letter. So when there's a compliance finding, it's, this one, for some reason, winds up as a reportable controlled deficiency because we did not deem it to be a significant deficiency or material weakness. And then I guess when we get to circle back to the single audit, this year is, we did test the district's ESER and ARP grant programs in which we issued an unmodified opinion over the compliance of those programs and over the internal controls on those programs as well. As we just discussed, there's the single audit finding that is reported in there, which there's a corrective action plan already communicated with Fran, communicated by Fran, and it's already been rectified. So, yeah, unmodified opinions on those and everything, I think, went very well and appreciate working with the district and their team.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go watch the Bears get beat down now.
Enjoy. Have a good night.
You too.
You audit them.
Yeah.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
Got to love little buttons that they don't tell you about. Okay, we did go out for bid on landscaping. We got three companies to submit bids for, again, a contract, it's a one-year contract with the ability to roll for three. We had three contractors come through, Desertario, who has our snow, Beverly Landscaping, and From the Ground Up. From the Ground Up was actually purchased, purchased, we, the contract that we had prior to this was with Integrity. Integrity was sold to From the Ground Up. So From the Ground Up is actually who has been doing the landscaping over these last several months. When did they sell, Scotty?
Last winter.
Last winter. So this whole summer, it was From the Ground Up. So we received those three bids. We did tabulate based on estimates of how often we do weekly grass cutting and trimming and trimming of the bushes and weed treatments, et cetera. From the Ground Up did come in with the lowest bid again. For a total, if you go over the three years, it'll be a grand total of $216,0532, which was significantly less than the $1,000 a week less for the weekly cutting of the lawn. So it is going to be our recommendation that we stay with From the Ground Up for the landscaping.
Do we know their reputation?
Well, like I said, we've been working with them all summer.
Right.
I mean.
Oh, so they, okay, so they've, they've been cutting.
They've been cutting all summer.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so we've been with them for the last year. I mean, we had some growing pains, but they, they're getting their act together. I think it's, you know, a young fellow who owns the, he's trying to grow his business.
From the ground up.
Yes, from the ground up, exactly.
The social technology and adolescent research study, STARS? Welcome.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So the social technology study is part of the University of Chicago, and we were approached to participate in this study with our junior high students. Part of it is because of our ongoing relationship with the University of Chicago. Several years ago, our district participated in a long-term study under the CEC program, which followed students participating in what is now the Kinder Prep Program, and it followed the impact of their participation over several years. We've maintained a relationship with Ms. Kristen Troutman, who is the director of the research study. She is not here with us this evening, but we've, as part of that relationship has really grown into a trusting partnership. The Kinder Prep Program also is what stayed in our district. Even after the study was over, we continue to run that program, and that is a direct correlation to participating in that study. We always have very high numbers and participation in that program. So Ms. Troutman approached us again for an additional study, and this is completely different. This study is aimed to reduce adolescents' social media usage, which is something we are very interested in, and we were also selected for this study participation because of our implementation of the Yonder Bags and just our ongoing efforts at Parker to try to reduce cell phone usage at school. So the idea of this study is that, as with any other research study, it takes students into two groups. All students will be rewarded, paid through gift cards for setting goals around reducing their social media usage. Some of the apps that the study will follow are Facebook, Snapchat, TikTok, the major programs that students are using. So it will ask students to complete surveys and then, bless you, and then monitor their social media usage through an app that they will be asked to download, of course, with the parental consent. If students meet their goals and reduce their social media usage, they will be rewarded with gift cards. And this is for all students at Parker who participate in this study.
Just to clarify, are they rewarded when they set the goals and then if they meet them, or just if they meet them?
If they meet them. And they will also receive, like, other prizes for participating, but they don't get the gift card, which is the monetary award, until they meet their goal for reducing their cell phone usage or their social media usage. I do want to stress that that nuance is important. It's not reducing their overall cell phone usage, it is specific to the usage of social media and those major platforms.
Now, you say major platforms, like all the platforms, or are we just looking at, like, the top three-ish?
Yeah.
We know there's like hundreds of little ones that.
Absolutely. The main platforms that the study is following is Facebook, Snapchat, TikTok, and X.
So who's the control group in this study? Is it students at another school?
There will be a control group at our school as well as other schools. They're targeting 3,000 students throughout the Chicagoland area and also in San Francisco. Our, our school will have a control group as well as a research study group.
And so how's the control group different from the?
Yes. So the control group will participate with researchers when they come on site, doing additional activities to teach students about the positive impact of reducing their social media usage. So our researchers will come to join students during advisory classes to give them additional lessons and support on how to continue to reduce their social media usage and the benefits of it. All students will receive a monetary gift card or reward for reducing their overall usage. The additional students will participate in the sort of lessons or getting the tools to help reduce it further.
Are the other students that are involved in this, in the area, do their schools not have a cell phone policy or no?
It really depends. I'm not sure. Their, I think, cell phone policies, as they evolve, they're, they look different. Some are using Yonder. I know, just in our discussions with Ms. Troutman, they're very interested in districts that are using some more, sort of more formal tools like the Yonder pouches, but I don't, I don't believe it's limited to districts like ours that are using Yonder. So as a part of the study, again, students will have to participate in a survey sort of reflecting on their current usage, how, meaning like how much time are they spending on social media? How do they feel after extended amounts of time on social media? The survey questions are also included in the board packet. Their parents will also be asked to complete a survey, as well as teachers who have experience with the students who are participating. Teachers will also receive gift cards for participating and reflecting on the students in the survey. There are some data pieces that we will need to share with the study, and we will need to have parents sign off on that. Parents will be asked to sign off and give consent to sharing the academic data for students, including their grade data, their test scores, as well as their attendance records. And we'll work with the organization, similarly how we worked with the CEC study, to make sure that those forms and documents are transparent and that parents know what they're agreeing to share.
So if the students do not have the previously mentioned for social media accounts, then they will not be allowed to be in the study?
That's not right.
It's not?
No, so.
I was trying to find that in here.
I know, if I'm, if I'm interpreting this correctly.
Yeah.
The entire population of students are in this study.
Yes.
They're going to use a lottery to determine which one are actually getting the intervention.
Okay.
But it wouldn't be appropriate, you'd be biasing the study if you picked the kids who had social media, right? So the lottery would be random.
Yeah. So, and we do not, we, as well as the researchers, as well as parents, do not have control over which students go into which groups. It's entirely randomized.
So basically, parents are opting out of it if they don't, they're going to be in this?
You'll be selected by lottery and the parents have an opportunity, and students would have an opportunity.
Absolutely. And that is a point that we asked the researchers. It is an opt-out versus being an opt-in. The, we asked, would it be an option for parents to opt their kids into the study versus opting out? Just wondering if we could give that additional piece of sort of support. That, our response, what we received from the researchers is that if we get a very small number of students participating, it would really mean that it's not, it's not a robust enough sample. So we would really need to make sure that as many students as possible are participating in the study, so therefore the opt-out process will be used versus the opt-in.
I'm all for this because we all want to reduce cell phone usage in any way, shape, or form, or cellphone, all cellphone, I don't really think it has a need for any children. But how is this going to affect a day-to-day?
Sure.
Academically for our students? Is this going to interrupt any, you know, teaching time or anything of this, that nature? Can you explain that part?
Absolutely, and we did discuss that with Ms. Troutman. The times that the researchers will be working with students will be during their advisory times. For our eighth-grade classes that do not have a set advisory time, it would be during win time or during another time that does not interrupt their instructional time at all. To the, your question of what is the overall benefit, I think we feel the same way. Any efforts to reduce student social media and cell phone usage and also encourage students to reflect on their current usage and how to reduce it is a win for us. We feel like that's something that all districts are trying to find some solutions for. We think we're on to something with the Yonder pouches, and I think the University of Chicago agrees with just, as that expands, there's been so many districts since, in the past year or so, that have decided to pick up Yonder pouches because this is a big deal and it really has an impact on mental health and student performance at school.
So, Emma Bell, I get what you're talking about.
Yeah.
I just have like three questions.
Sure.
What will this district gain short-term? What will the district gain long-term? And how do you see this, whatever comes out of this, being incorporated or not being incorporated into anything sustainable?
Yeah. To take the first two questions, I would say the same answer. Short-term and long-term, we are interested in our students reducing their use of social media and just overall benefits of mental health, benefits of their time, their interactions with each other is really important. So we would hope to see an impact on that for all students, short-term. Long-term, we would hope to see a more sustainable impact on students making better choices around social media. And can you repeat your third question also?
So how do you see this being, whatever the results are, woven into?
Sure.
The district's systems, operations, et cetera, et cetera? How do you see that happen?
Yeah, I think in general, it goes, it falls in line nicely with our ongoing efforts with implementing the Yonder pouches and, again, just wanting students to reduce their social media usage. I don't know if I would say that any of the things that they're, they're going to do with students that we know of now would go into a class or would go into further lessons. I think that's yet to be seen. I think the general idea of students being reflective and making responsible decisions on social media, not only in their amount of time that they're spending on social media, but the decisions that they're making, who they're choosing to comment with, things they're willing to share, or making better decisions about that, that would be our overall endgame for the district.
Any other questions?
So once discussed and approved, our next steps with the University of Chicago would be to work with Principal Paris and her team to develop a schedule for those advisory class activities. Again, those are short pieces of time with students where researchers would come in. Also, work on the timeline for rolling out the surveys, as well as this, again, the schedule for the advisory classes, with the hopes to start the study in late February.
It's five weeks, right? Five-week study?
Yes. Realistically, this is probably going through the end of the school year when we do all of the tabulation of data and sort of reflecting. It'll, we'll be involved in some way through the end of the school year.
Right, it'll, it'll be 18 months before they publish a paper, but.
Sure.
But I seem to recall, and tell me if I'm wrong, the, when we had to do studies in, at the pre-kind care, pre-K stuff.
Yeah.
The studies were extended several times.
Yeah.
Right?
They were several times to the tune of eight years. Yeah, so we've been involved with the CEC study for years.
And part of the reason for that was that particular research groups, one of their mantras is we need much longer, longer.
Absolutely.
I don't, I guess, are we, have you talked to them about, is this likely to grow into further studies or is this just a, I'm actually kind of surprised to have this group present a five-week study, so like.
Could you repeat that?
Is it really going to end in five weeks or are they going to extend it?
Yeah, I, we've briefly talked about that. I think we could anticipate it extending. I think that also depends on the other schools and other districts, the numbers that they get for the study. I could see it extending into monitoring the students and their usage through junior high as well as through high school.
Okay, so if we get enough participation, not necessarily just us, but.
Sure.
The broader study, and it seems to be working well, there's a chance it gets extended.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Was there any discussion about why they chose the social media platforms they chose? I don't know any 12-year-olds on Facebook that is like 40 and older.
Accurate.
Right? I mean, I'm kind of surprised. I don't know how much data they're going to get using Facebook.
They missed Instagram.
They, they might have thrown it in there just for us old timers.
It must have been the 40-year-olds making this survey.
I mean, we should be in that study.
Right.
Yeah, I will ask them that. I'm not sure. I think it might have been based on other research data, I'm not sure on that. I think there's also flexibility to add other programs as the students respond to the survey. I think that's one of the first questions that's asked in the survey, where are you spending most of your time?
But as I understand it, it's not, they're not looking at a specific social media platform, right? So according to the documents you gave us, you know, the students are going to be submitting screenshots of their screen time.
Absolutely.
Which would probably, which would cover everything.
Yeah, and so they'll use that data from the students' questions. It's not specific to one platform, it's overall social media usage reduction.
I wish them the best of luck.
Did you say you wished them the best of luck?
I said, I wish them the best of luck.
Yes.
There's a number of arguments in my household.
Yeah.
Like your screen time. I'm pretty sure none of those worked. Any further questions on the STARS study?
No.
And then we have our 24, 2024, 25 school improvement plan updates.
Good sign back in, just briefly, but we'll welcome Dr. Isabella up to the front. Again, you know, we are on a process of continually bringing back our school improvement plans. Certainly, our data sets, as we get those in the fall, winter, and spring, but even in the interim, we do want to share the type, descriptions of the work that's happening in the different schools, updates on the goals, any major changes, et cetera. So these are brief, but we will continue these in between all of our, our data sets, which we are right now. Winter data will come to the board either at the end of January or the first meeting in February. Winter data will come to the board either at the end of January or the first meeting in February. Dr. Isabella.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
Happy early holidays to all of you. So, we're going to give you a quick update just on how our culture and climate's going, and then the academics at Western. We're going to start with culture and climate. And what we decided to do is, last year we did that Facing History survey. And we do not have this this year, so at a building leadership team, we talked about wanting to take a temperature check. So what we did is we looked at the five essential survey, and we chose those areas where we were still neutral in teacher collaboration. And we put them out as a Google survey. We had pretty much all of our staff take that and give us feedback with it. And then the BLT, Building Leadership Team, reviewed that and kind of looked at, are there any areas that we have to tweak things for? Really, we had a lot of positive comments that, you know, even though this might have been hard this year, our staff's come together, we're really collaborating, people have shared plans. So it was really positive, and the teams were like, oh, things are going well. There were some questions that still need clarity. Like there's one about just, I wouldn't work in any other building. And some people are still taking that as, well, I'm not flexible, they're going to fire me if I say I won't work somewhere else. Where it really just means, do you like working at Western? And so still a little more clarity that we'll bring. And our building leadership team members, when it's time to take the five essentials, they do meet with their grade level teams without myself or Mrs. Dunwoodie and just kind of talk about the survey and what that means. We also were really transparent with it, people could put comments, it was anonymous, so they could feel good about sharing their feedback. And we just shared it with the staff, here's how everybody's, here's where we're at right now, these are some areas to work on. So continue to keeping that trust up. And then what we also implemented is our, our classified staff does not. So Mrs. Dunwoodie has been hosting monthly, Mrs. Dunwoodie has been hosting monthly classified staff meetings. So during one of our PLCs, while our certified staff is looking at their data and everything, our classified staff members are meeting with Mrs. Dunwoodie, they bring concerns, they ask her for, how can you help with some things? She brings them ideas, and it's just a little bit more comfortable forum for them. And we've gotten some wonderful feedback, it was even in the five essentials temperature check that said, thank you so much for these monthly meetings. They've been really appreciated. And then we did the halfway Capturing Kids' Hearts survey to see where are we at on those items. And really, some of the areas that we're working on is student-led raiders and students-led with the launch and the shout-outs. So already, we had some teachers who are doing student-led shout-outs. So at our building meetings where we do our Name It Claimets, we've been highlighting staff members who have been able to have students leading those things. So last week, we had a video clip of even when the shout-outs get done, the kids will go, I have a shout-out, who's your shout-out? And then they're like, my shout-out's for Dr. Smith. And they do that. And another staff member said, I was so inspired yesterday, I already tweaked how I did my shout-outs. So really leaning on each other to improve that climate and culture and give more ownership to the students in it. And so our next steps is we're almost finished applying for our first time we've applied for the national showcase for Capturing Kids' Hearts. And then, any quick questions on climate and culture? And then just a quick temperature check on academics, really, we have not changed much. We were waiting for that winter data to make sure, how are things going? How do we need to react when that comes through? The planning days have been very helpful from the Teaching and Learning Department. Staff are feeling a lot more confident in, okay, we're all on the same page, here's where we're at, what are we missing? What resources have you found? So those days have been very, very helpful, focusing on that small group. And again, how can we differentiate it more? Not just, okay, we're playing small group and chopping the lesson, but, okay, I'm giving each student group what they need. We've also heard in, especially at conferences, the redraw, write, explains that we're doing for math, so they talk more about why they did things, are hard. So we've heard some feedback that parents are like, this is hard to do. They said, yes, that's why you're getting one to do, because we want it done correctly. We want them to be able not just to do the algorithms there, but can you explain how you did that thinking? So we've noticed that is challenging for our students, and we see that in that IAR data. So now, we've given our math, we've had just a quick glance at it, teachers already started discussing, okay, what can we do? We noticed this group wasn't here, we need to start digging into this. So they are ready for those PLCs to really dig apart the MAP RIT bands that we use, which are those content bands that to say, what is the area we need to focus on? They're already saying, we want to look at what win groups did, do we need to adjust this win group and what we're focusing on? So already, they've been talking about how to answer that data. So what we're going to do is, as soon as we start back in January, we'll have that finalized MAP data, the kindergarten AIMS data, and we're ready to dig in and determine what do we need to adjust to continue to see more growth. And we'll also look at our win groups and determine, is there a different area of focus? We're still pushing hard on making sure those IAR practices are in there so that students are also ready for that. So we haven't changed much since I last updated you on the academic side. As you know, we don't want to keep changing things till we see some data to know what we should adjust there. So that is where we are at right now, we're excited to come back moving forward. Any questions?
So you guys set some fairly, you know, challenging goals on the academic front.
Mm-hmm.
Which we appreciate. Is it fair to say that until we get the test data in January, you're not quite sure how much progress you're making on those?
So preliminary, we did look at some of those MAP scores, and while our school profile shows that the proficiency targets are still pretty much where we want to see them, our growth didn't show it's where we want to see it. So we do have to adjust a bit there. But also, on our data, if you recall, we were opposite. Our math map was a lot higher than the ELA map, and then on IAR, we were flipped. So again, we're trying to determine what are those areas that we need to hit. So we're still holding firm on them. We also, you know, have, feel a lot more comfortable now with that standard space, where we at, those planning days have been helpful for everybody to understand. So proficiency-wise, we're holding. But growth-wise, we need to dig into that. And that was what we just said, just from a very brief glance at, you know, it wasn't even finalized yet. Like the standard deviation reports hadn't been run or anything, it was just a really quick, how did we do? Hopefully that was okay to share.
Sure. Any further questions?
All right, well, thank you, everybody, and again, enjoy your holiday break.
Yeah, thank you. Welcome, Ms. Paris.
Hello. So for Parker, excuse me, for Parker, we're going to talk about, as well, improving our safety rating for common and culture, as well as our attendance rallies. As you know, we're partnered with City Year. We just recently had our student City Year staff basketball game. And in order to participate, you must have been in the bucket, as you say, for ninety percent attendance. We're looking forward to celebrating in January for our TikTok talent show. And what that means is scholars that have been in attendance for ninety percent or greater will be in a in-house TikTok talent show, not published, of course. But City Year is helping us with displaying our talent show, talent of our scholars. Capturing Kids' Hearts, we launched our survey just as Western has as well. And so we're looking forward to earning that, looking at that data. So far, we have about four hundred scholars participated in the Capturing Kids' Hearts survey, and about fifty staff participated, but it closes the end of this week. So we're looking to evaluate how we're doing with our social contracts, good things, relationship building, and our teachers encouraging our scholars. There's a specific question in there that speaks to our scholar perspective on if our teachers are really giving them that encouragement every day. PBIS lessons during advisory, our current practice is to improve our scholars wearing their scholar IDs. We are conducting random ID sweeps, scholars have no idea which teacher is going to check their IDs that day and give them PBIS points. And so every scholar that has thirty-five or more points specifically for IDs will attend our winter celebration on the twentieth during advisory. And our scholars have a choice in that advisory class of how they want to be celebrated. Also, we're looking forward to decreasing defiance and having lessons in our advisory time of decreasing defiance. We're looking to make sure we have less than ten percent of our scholars receiving referrals for defiance. So we're taking that opportunity during the advisory lessons to teach that piece. What's next for us is to look at the survey data from Capturing Kids' Hearts to see what adjustments we need to make. Also scholars that have, excuse me, grade-level scholars that have decreased in defiance, we're looking forward to celebrating them in a sneaker ball in January, at the end of January. So hopefully, all grade levels can participate in that sneaker ball. As far as ELA and our math goes, we want to make sure our ELA exceeds, for those scholars meeting or exceeding on IAR fifty-five percent or higher, meeting or exceeding twenty-nine percent or higher for math. We're continuing to have professional learning communities where we're aligning our assessments to IAR's question stems, as well as our proficiency scales. Our scholars are doing a great job tracking their progress in their win classes, as well as rating themselves on those proficiency scales and content areas. And we're excited of our partnership with City Year. Our City Year AmeriCorps members have over a hundred and twenty scholars identified based upon at-risk attendance, at-risk grades, at-risk assessment scores. And they're partnering with those scholars, meaning side-by-side collaboration for intervention. Their goal is to have sixty intervention minutes per week with every scholar. And so they're pushing into those win classes, pushing into their content area classes, and also meeting with our scholars during VIP lounges during lunch, once they met a certain goal for those intervention minutes. We have partnered with Association of Middle-Level Education, which is AMLE. And so they're working with some of our teacher leaders and collaborating with our teachers during professional development opportunities. So our teachers can realize what it means to be a true middle-schooler and what the characteristics and attributes of a middle school looks like. And so they're helping us engage in that opportunity with our teachers. Where we're going next is we plan to conduct teacher data chats in January, as well as continue with the scholar data chats, as well as elevate tutoring. We made a shift with elevate tutoring opportunities. Previously, elevate tutoring was offered after school. We noticed that several scholars did not participate after school. So we're able to devise a plan to offer elevate tutoring to our tier-two scholars during win classes specifically. So hopefully, we can make a greater impact on that. And so that concludes our report for our school improvement plan.
I had a question about City Year.
Sure.
Obviously, it looks like they are, like you said, tremendous impact so far at this juncture in the school year.
Absolutely, and the piece we don't see are the walks in the hallway, those individual conversations that City Year is having. It's truly making, I had a conversation today with our City Year AmeriCorps member, that's an avid, that connects with our sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade scholars. We're actually seeing them not just encouraging, not just side-by-side intervention opportunities, but coming to the basketball games, the volleyball games, and so we do see those, those relationships building, absolutely.
That's great to hear, thank you.
So you guys also put down some fairly challenging and specific goals on the academic side. Do you think you're on track to hit those goals?
My heart says yes, but I've got to dig into the data a little bit more. As a quick overview being that our MAP window just closed Friday, we did notice some, some positive results from scholars in terms of making that growth. But we also noticed there are some scholars that were on the bubble of growth to proficiency. And so we want to dig a little bit deeper just to make that determination.
Do you think students and their families really appreciate? So when I see twenty, you know, we were at twenty-two and a quarter percent average, students meeting or exceeding on the IAR, right? So for the folks that aren't in that twenty-two to quarter percent, do you think that they, students, parents, all together, do you think they really appreciate how important it is not to be in that group?
I would say that based upon the feedback from our teachers, observing our scholars during this last assessment, there seems to be a more seriousness for testing. And that is coming from the classroom, the work that our teachers are doing with proficiency scales, standards-based learning. There are some challenges happening in the classroom with our scholars, our parents are receiving that information. So the challenge is started by, based upon what's happening in the classroom first, which puts our scholars in a position to take those testing opportunities more serious.
Well, I guess I'm not focused on the test itself. So a phrase I hate to hear from parents is, well, I wasn't good at math, so, you know, little Joey gotta see, oh, well, right? It makes me pull my hair out. All right, so, so, you know, I, that's, the state of Illinois a few years ago said, all right, we're going to make getting through algebra in the eighth grade the standard. And that was the right move. And then they said, well, and then we're going to make the IAR tougher. We're going to end all this grade inflation with cut scores, we're going to make it tough. And that's why we have statewide the numbers that we have. But I just wonder whether, as a whole, parents and students have really absorbed the message that if you don't get here by eighth grade, your opportunities as an adult will be limited, to some degree or another, right? So, and I just don't know that, it's, I'm sorry, you're there every day. Do they really get that?
What has helped us is scholars rating themselves in that content every single day in the classroom because we made a shift in our instructional practices with standards-based learning. So scholars are now speaking to, I earned A two in math today because I did not absorb this particular task. And they're able to speak to that with fidelity. So that's a little different, a lot different than where we were last year.
The parents who know, know, and the ones that don't, don't. And that's kind of a non-answer. I think on our end, it's funny that you started with, oh, I just wasn't good in math, and therefore, there's some release of responsibility that we have identified with families that comes from the parent level when they say that. We've actually had conversations about how do we reverse that conversation? So that there's an understanding that it has to be rigorous, but also, in order to reach the goals that you're probably trying to reach, you, you must excel in math. You just have to understand it, you have to be proficient in it, you have to understand how it works so that when you do get to high school, all of those doors are open. We know that if you're not in algebra, there are doors that will not be open for you. And it's going to take a lot of work, so probably over the summer, taking courses elsewhere, once you get to the high school level to kind of catch up and accelerate that piece. So I think on our end, part of it becomes a parent-university kind of pathway of work. That we talk about, what does it mean to be a mathematical household? What does it mean to have a perspective that, yeah, math is, it was absolutely complex for me, it wasn't my favorite. But also, it's really important, you can learn it, just like absolutely everything else, and there's a way to approach it to find success. So kind of a non-answer there, but I would tell you that that's, that's an area that we can accelerate because that parent support at home and, and just the willingness to have those mathematical conversations would be helpful.
And Cam, I'm the opposite, because I was that not good in math, and I have, I have striven, that is the wrong word, that's not a word. I have driven myself to push and make sure that my, my daughters are doing and understanding what they're doing, so I
No, it's anecdotal, I mean, but
And I still have my hair, so.
When I try to understand why we have, and it's not just us, right, statewide, so many kids are not there. You know, I think the, so, you know, it's, it's obviously a global problem, right? It's not the four kids, it's not the kids with one parent, it's everyone, right? So it seems to me that we're missing something culturally on the importance of it. And I don't know that we, as a district, have decided to actually push on that front.
I think it's important that we realize that the challenge that parents, students have in math is not specific to the individuals. It is a systemic problem in the way we teach math in our country. And, and it has to be addressed on a very high level to see the impact that we want to. Certainly, anecdotally, we can talk to family, families about the importance of speaking positively about math education. But on a larger scale, you have to have curriculum, instructional resources that provide best practices in terms of how you engage kids in learning mathematics. And until we see that happen, our struggles will continue. I'm, the jury's out, at least in my opinion, in terms of where kids have to be at certain ages. I mean, are there some trends and patterns that we can speak to? Absolutely. Are there numerous cases where you can give examples of people who gone to be professors in engineering that did horrible in math in high school? Mathematicians who didn't do so well in math in high school? Absolutely, those cases occur. I think overall, we have to make the commitment to best practices. And I'm looking forward to enhancing that in our January meetings.
I knew I could try out, Michael. I just have to say enough wrong things about that.
I'm glad you said that, because I hate to put a number or a benchmark that you have to get to be something in life, because I was never strong in math, and hey, I have a degree, right? So I don't want to put a stigma on where, like Michael said, where you should be at this level and what that will do to impact your entire life. and what that will do to impact your entire life. So I, yeah, so thank you for saying that.
Any further questions for Ms. Paris?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, nurse stipends.
Hello.
Hello.
We have an excellent group of nurses in Fosmore School District. We do have an instance that has arisen where it requires one of our nurses to perform skilled care procedures beyond the typical role of a school nurse. And so we have brought this to you, asking for twenty-five-dollar-a-day stipend when we ask a nurse to complete something that only their expertise could do, such as tube feeding or catheterization of a student on a daily basis. And then in addition to that, we recently increased the guest teacher rate and have not increased our rate for guest nurses in years. We do have a couple registered nurses who come in and are guest nurses for us. And so we would ask to increase that rate for them also, to continue to be competitive. Currently, who is completing this?
In a typical day, if we have a guest nurse, will they work?
At least six, six to seven. They come for the full day and cover us. If they're unable to, our district nurse, Susan Proudy, goes in to make sure that our schools have, are covered at all times.
So, okay, do we have enough nurses?
Yes.
But we want to make sure that we're being competitive in our pricing for the nursing?
Yes, so the second one is for guest nurses. So just when one of our five nurses, we have one at each school, is absent, we have two to three nurses on our guest registered nurse list. And right now, we pay them twenty-two dollars an hour, and to be competitive, we really should pay more, like twenty-seven.
So, so we're only talking about the increase for the guest nurses, not our current nurses?
For the guests. And then the top is the stipend for skilled care procedures. We have one of our nurses in our district completing those skilled care procedures for a student daily. And so that would ask for a stipend, because it's time-consuming and only she is able to do it. No one else in the building would be skilled to complete catheterization. So we're asking for a stipend for that.
Is this an additional stipend to the, what you improved in the budget? Because I don't believe you had already approved some stipends. Is this an additional?
This is separate. The nurses aren't on like the teacher contract, so it's a step, a separate stipend than in the budget. I don't know, I don't think there was a nurse stipend in the budget. No, I don't know of that. Yeah, this is the first time we're bringing this to you.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Any further questions?
No. Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any questions on our information items? January four topics. Hour four minutes. I mean, surely you guys want to stay.
So moved.
Second.
On favor. We are adjourned at seven-eleven PM.
Way to go. Have a great night, everyone. Happy holidays.